...town council joint workshop with the Waste Water Management Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mrs. Mello?
Counsel Gurlak.
Present.
Counsel Shabett.
Present.
Counsel Lambert.
Present.
Counsel Rodrick.
Present.
Counsel DiMaderis.
Present.
Counselor Aruda is absent and Counsel Palatier may be late.
Okay, before we begin, let's stand and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a public informational meeting on the sewer systems construction program. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Leroy Kendricks. And to make this easier, I'm going to ask the council if we'll go down and sit in the audience so that they can dim the lights and use the screen.
Thank you. Tonight's agenda is pretty simple. We're gonna have our consultant, Tom Parisi from AECom, present the results of our facilities plan update. And after the results are presented, we're gonna open it up for Q and A from the audience. So with that, but before I ask Tom to come up, I'd like to introduce the members of the Waste Water Management Commission, Johnny Cristo here, Colleen Stanton, Chris Nearpass, Jeff Sterns, and Michelle Tappenheart. And I'm Leroy Kendricks. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom Parisi with AECom.
Thanks, Leroy. Good evening. Tonight, we'd like to talk about the update of the wastewater treatment facility plan. The agenda has about 10 or 12 different items where to go through, various slides, about 25 slides, and hopefully, we'll be able to get done so we can watch the Bruins be victorious tonight. So what's the purpose of the update? Is to reassess the areas that have been previously done from the last three update plans, to find those limits. You'll see them on the boards here to my left and on some of the screens we'll do, and then provide the town a clear path of how to implement those. Prior studies start back in 1968, the most recent one in 2000. That was the basis of this update, was the one that was approved in 2000 by the RITM. Conclusions was that all of the areas still needed to be serviced, few little tweaks here and there. Presented a plan, but at the time, it was a townwide plan. And now, we're zooming into a much specific area, really, the high-end areas of needs in town. What drove the question? Really, the Sesspool Act in 2007. It's really requiring within 200 feet of the waterfront of Mount Hope Bay to implement to remove cesspools that are polluting the bay and the rest of the environment. It was also by the Stormwater NPDS, the TMDL study, the Total Maximum Daily Load Study. That's the amount of pollutants that regulatory agencies believe can be put in the environment and let the environment still treat it through Mother Nature. Basically, 2011 is when that started. If you look at the last bullet there, really, RITM is saying the town needs to do something to deal with their wastewater pollution problems, either by implementing previous plans or reviewing those plans and updating it, which is what this project is all about. So what are some of the goals? Identify those areas best served by sewers. Prioritize those areas, areas of needs based on the 2007 Sesspool Act. Conduct a preliminary design of those so we can end up having costs associated with those. Create a preliminary estimate of those costs for the sewer construction. Create a schedule of one that needs to occur. Identifying various funding sources that may be available. Create that financial plan so it's an economical solution. And then, obviously, satisfy RITM and EPA relative to, so they're allowed to qualify for the various funding sources. So, what are some of the findings? It did document that the need is still there. It does not change. We determined that the cost of sewers, to install them in these areas, is much more cost-effective than trying to do onsite wastewater treatment systems, AKA the cesspools or conventional onsite system. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. We also were able to identify with the commission a particular funding sources. Unfortunately, with the federal government money grants that used to be in the old EPA days have really disappeared. Keep in mind that when the original layout was done in the 80s, it was voted downtown-wide, even though there was 90% funding that was gonna come from the federal government and the state government. Unfortunately, those days are long gone. What's available, though, is through the USDA, Department of Agriculture, is a 45% grant, which is almost unheard of, and also roughly a 3% loan that will be amortized over a 40-year period. There is one catch, or two catches to it. One is the population needs to be under 10,000 people in town. Unfortunately, Tiverton does not have that. They're a little over 15,000. Fortunately, though, a way to around that is to create what they call a sewer district, similar to the water districts that are currently in town. That would allow us to be able to get access to those monies. What are the recommendations? Recommendations were expanding in those areas that have the need for sewers. Conduct a study. An aquatic pond area, because it's so far out, the expense to do it by bringing it into our system would be so cost prohibitive, even with the 45% money grant. Then phase it into implementable stages, whatever, so you learn from stage to stage, from phase to phase, but also so you can take it and spread it out over a period of time so you're not digging up every single road in the North Tiverton area. So, creating that sewer district. Obviously, it encompasses the existing service areas, encompasses the future service areas, and would be only those individuals within those service areas that ultimately would pay for the construction of the project. It would not be a townwide vote, nor it would be a townwide funding source for that. Again, it would be only individuals within those areas to cover the capital cost and the operation of the system. Develop a capital plan has been done as part of the project and spread it over some 15- to 20-year period. And then, continue to research as we go along other funding sources. There are times that the federal government does come up with other funding sources. Arrow Funding, and probably people have heard of that from various projects, came up a few years ago, and we've successfully used that in some of all the projects. So, what are sewer construction areas? On the right-hand side, kinda list them. We broke them into various phases, and we'll talk about that in a minute of why we've done that. There is a map here, or in the middle here, a little bit more detail that we can talk about, but it obviously goes from the upper end where the Fall River city-town line is all the way down to the Riverside Drive area. Gonna talk about probably three most critical areas of need right now, the first being the Riverside Drive area, really driven by the Sesspool Act. Anyone's driven down that area knows, I mean, there are houses that are actually overhanging in the water. There's very small lots, no place to put onsite systems. There are poor soils, high groundwater conditions. What's it mean for that area? If they could even build something onsite, the costs are somewhere between $25,000 and $60,000 per residence, somewhere between, you know, $210 to over $500 per month over a 10-year period. The reason why we're talking about the 10-year period for this particular one is because in order to do something onsite individually as yourself, you most likely cannot get more than a 10-year loan through a home equity loan or some other source in order to pay for that. So that's what the basis of those particular numbers are from. If you put a sewer system in, it's probably about $16,500 to do that. And spread over the 45% grant, with the 3% loan over a 40-year period of time, it comes to about $125 per year, so pretty cost-effective. Excuse me, per month, I'm sorry. The other half of that equation is this. With an onsite system, it has a useful life of somewhere between 20 to 30 years. So even though you pay for it for 10 years, you may only get another 10 to 15 to 20 years of useful life, and you will have to rebuild it again, so those costs will still then occur. So to compare apples and apples. Bay Street area, lot of old cesspools, systems, high failure rate in the area, high groundwater conditions, obviously, they have the contamination throughout the area. So where do they stand? The onsite systems, $25,000 to $30,000, some $270 per month. And if you look at the sewer system option, it's some $11,000, and it equates to some $105 per month. And then, Robert Gray. RITMs identify two old falls that already have done contamination. They have a lot of failed systems. It is an older neighborhood, aging systems, probably have to be updated in the next 10 to 15 years to address those situations. Some $15,000 per residence, some $151 per month compared to $14,000 and some $115 per month. The other areas, and again, we've listed them, Church, Garden, Leopards, Mill, North Stafford, all be phased out as needs dictate. So let's talk about some of the needs areas, so some of the overall geographic areas. The pink area on the upper left-hand side, obviously, is the Bay Street area. Green is the Church Street area, Mill Street, North Stafford, and Leopards Road area. Riverside Drive. If you notice, this one has to have three phases of colors, and we've done that on purpose because we wanted to phase up construction with the highest area of need based on the Sesspool Act being the darkest red, well, roughly those properties that are within that 200-foot of the waterfront. And then, phase there, we go from the left to the right on the screen. Similarly, to the Robert Gray area, obviously, the darker blue area would again be the area of highest needs because of the Sesspool Act, and then moving up inland as we go forward. And then, Garden Heights, a very, very large area. There is a lot of areas of failed systems in here, and the problem with that is that the stormwater is being brought down and bringing those contaminants down in towards the Mount Hope Bay area. So we've phased this because of the size of it into two particular phases. We've also done preliminary sewer layout. I know it's more difficult to see up there, but again, there are two boards here off to my left-hand side that actually will show the preliminary areas of sewers and what is gonna be gravity sewers versus what we call low-pressure sewers. So, how are we gonna do this? One of the first keys is forming a sewer district. Again, it's a very defined geographic area. It's the areas of needs. Each of those neighborhoods would decide whether they want to be in that sewer district or not. That vote would happen sometime next spring. At that point, the commission would apply for USDA loans and grants. Again, there's loans and grants at this particular time of some 45 cents on the dollar, some 40-year with a 3% interest rate. That's an annual project, so every project we do would have to reapply for those grants, project by project as they're phased out. And then, we repay the loan with betterments, or monies that would come from the residents within those particular neighborhoods. What have we done so far as a commission? Well, there's been many commission meetings, in general, discussing back and forth. There'll be many more coming up. But there's also been three neighborhood meetings that have occurred on April 22nd, the 29th, and May 8th to cover the Bay Street Riverside and Robert Gray areas. There was probably some 200 individuals that showed up to those particular meetings. There was probably about 100 or so questions between the three different meetings to discuss a lot of items. So what are the results? Obviously, implementing the project would address the wastewater concerns, especially for Riverside Drive and the Robert Gray areas that are pertaining to the Sesspool Act, addresses failed systems throughout the areas, addresses the systems for the contamination of the stormwater that discharges into Mount Hope Bay through the stormwater system, and it really identifies the most cost-effective solution to deal with wastewater issues throughout this area of town. So with that, I know Leroy and the commission and myself would be more than happy to answer questions, and thank you for your attention.
Questions?
I have a question, sir. My name is John, I have a couple of questions. You've indicated in your literature that the betterment fee...
Excuse me. May I ask you about something, like everyone can hear?
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. My question to you would be, on the betterment fees, you're using a $20,000 investment as a betterment for sewer. How accurate is that figure? Is that what it's gonna cost us to run a line by our house, this betterment fee? All right, I'll answer that. What's your answer?
Yeah, on the handout on page... Is this on?
Nine.
On this handout, on page nine, there's a discussion of what a betterment is, and it's on the top of that particular page. That's only an example of what the cost is, if a betterment was about 20 grand. For these particular projects, the range is somewhere between $11,000 and $16,500. That's assuming that the 45% grant is obtained for the project. Those numbers are today's costs, so if they were projected out for various phases, obviously, that would increase a little bit based on inflation, but there's also a contingency that's been built into those construction numbers.
That would be as low as it would be in your estimation, roughly $10,000 per household?
That's correct.
And on the sewer user, annual sewer user charge, these rates, are these projected reduced rates with increased volume, or these existing rates? Is this what we pay now?
Yeah, those are the existing rates on the sewer user charges.
So if this plan were coming to effect, these rates would drop significantly? Somewhat? I'm not sure that the rates would drop, because what we have here is that we don't have a waste treatment plant. We send our sewage to Fall River, and so, a user charge consists of two parts. It will be what Fall River charges us, which may increase or stay the same. We don't have a lot of control of that. And the administrative fee that comes to Tiverton would come to the sewer district in order to maintain the pipes that we have in town. So it's a two-part fee. And so, what we have, what we've done is, back here at the back here, where we've actually estimated the costs, it shows the monthly payment that would be the betterment fee. I'm looking at page 11, and then, the monthly sewer user charge, and that fee consists of both a projected Fall River charge as well as our administrative and operations charge to maintain the pipes in town. Now, the plant, which is located in Fall River...
Right.
...is a regional wastewater facility, correct? That's what I understand. I've never, I haven't talked to Fall River about this particular project, but I understand that it is a plant that has a capacity and it has other uses other than the residents of Fall River. Including Tiverton? Yes. We currently dispose wastewater, wastewater at that plant, yes. So, and this is my understanding, and this is just things I've read, nothing official. I don't know what their mission statement is or how they were set up, but that system was designed to handle so much waste from Rhode Island, from Tiverton. And they also handle a sonnet and regional wastewater facility. It's not a Fall River facility. It's nothing to do with the city, just happens to be located in their proper...
Yeah, it is a city or Fall River facility. In Tiverton's case, the Tiverton has what they call an IMA, or an intermunicipal agreement for flows up to 2 million gallons. And within that 2 million gallons, this proposed plan is gonna bring your flows from some 90,000 gallons to like 1.2 million gallons, so still well within the capacity of the intermunicipal agreement and the capacity at Fall River.
In your experience, Tom, is there a possibility with increased flow that we could get a better or a reduced rate?
That has been one of the discussions with the council, is to go, just have a discussion with Fall River. If we bring this many more users on, can we renegotiate the existing intermunicipal agreement?
So that gives us a little leverage?
There may be some leverage there. And then, one other thing I wanna talk about, the cost, when I mentioned some $11,000 to $16,500 for the cost, that not only includes the work on the public property, that is in the streets, but it also includes a connection from the street on to, right up to the house.
Right to the home.
Right up to the home, that's correct. So it's kind of a worst-case scenario.
So these fees are basically the higher end, or more than what you would anticipate? We tried to be conservative, because this is a budgetary estimate. We've not done the design yet, but based on Tom's experience, AECom's experience with this, we think we're in the right ballpark. Now, one of the other things, too, is there's a, Fall River charges a connection fee, and as part of our renegotiations or negotiations with them, we're gonna try to get that lower, too. Again, enticing more users on, that gives them more flows and more revenue. They should be, have some consideration for reducing the fees. And this water usage, I believe there was a number in here, what is the, what are they charged by the cubic foot, correct?
100 cubic feet.
Yeah. What's the average use per month for a regular, you know, a normal home, family of four, say? Do you have figures on that?
Generally, the annual usage is about 95 HCF, 100 cubic feet. I'd have to do some quick calculations to bring it down into gallons and monthly.
But basically, we've got a $65 a month fee in there to cover what we suspect is the monthly... So that's very accurate and very reasonable?
That's right.
For the average home. That's not bad. Good, thank you. That's all I have, Joe.
Great, you're welcome.
Nancy Mello, Colonial Lab. I'm in the Robert Gray area. I just have some basic questions, because I did attend the meeting with the Robert Gray area. There are about 90 people there, and I've had a lot of people question me since that point, that they didn't quite understand. I spoke to council, they didn't quite understand. When you talk about these fees, but you're doing each contract separately, so that's a different fee for each contracted area.
That's correct.
This is not, you can't just bank on that fee. It depends how many people in your area for that contract to be done. So, is it six areas that you have? Or eight areas? Eight contract areas?
Yeah, there's a total of eight service areas, or proposed service areas. The sewer user fee, the $6.34 per hundred, would stay the same throughout. Anyone that's connected to the system, it's the capital cost for each of those individual areas that would vary based on the number of users within that area.
Betterment fees.
For the betterment fees, and that's why there's a range from 11,000 to 16,500 to cover those six areas of proposed construction.
Okay, I understand that. Now, when you say there's going to be a vote of the people, how many, are you going by households? Is that how you determine how many people in the district, how many people in your contracts, your eight contracts? So do you know how many are actually in the areas you're talking about?
Yeah, we have a parcel count within each of those areas, and that's how we've come up with these particular numbers.
And what is your parcel count?
Robert Gray area, sir?
Well, we'll try that one, okay. Doesn't matter which one, it's gonna vary by contract. So when you say there's a vote...
There's some 550-ish within the Robert Gray area. So the Robert Gray area, just like the other areas, will then vote to decide if, as a neighborhood or as a service area, do they want to be included in this sewer district? And it would have to be a majority vote, is that's how right now, at least, it's proposed.
Right, but a majority of the 500, or suppose 40 people show up, and 21 people vote for sewage? Are you saying that's a majority vote? I don't understand how the vote...
It's a majority of the individuals that vote.
Yes.
Not the majority of the neighborhood that is going to be sued?
Right, so if only 100 people showed up out of the 500-ish, and 51 of them voted in favor of it, the commission would take that as an affirmative that they want to be within the district.
By the way, I'm not saying I'm for or against, I'm just, these questions keep coming up, and I don't think it's being explained that way. When you talk about forming a wastewater district, what are you actually saying to the people that they may not understand? Which is, you need to be apart from the town of Tiverton. Are you setting up a district such as North Tiverton Water Department that we're all used to in North Tiverton, since this pretty much, some of them are Stonebridge, I think that, pretty much, we're all with North Tiverton?
Right.
We understand North Tiverton's financial problems, Water District I'm talking about?
Right.
And that there comes problems with that, with, you know, whatever, pipes, water tanks, this, that, and the other. Are you saying that this wastewater district would have to leave the town and be its own independent entity?
That is correct, because that's the only way you can get within the, under the 10,000 population limit that USDA requires in order to receive that 45% grant and the 3% loan over a 40-year period of time.
Okay, so let's just take an example and say that for my neighborhood of 500 homes, I don't know, 50 show up, 27 want it, we're gonna have sewage. Okay, and it is a necessary evil, I'm not, I'm just trying to say, people keep asking me this stuff, and I don't think it's out there, the information. Okay, so the sewage is going to go down there, and it's, you're gonna go out and bid the contract, and let's say it costs, I don't know what sewer costs, $10 million. You're gonna divide it by those 500, so those that didn't show up, it doesn't matter, your vote is not taken. This is how we get the industrial parks, that we get a lot of things.
Right.
You have to be paying attention. You have to do your part and show up. Okay, now we hit ledge and it's more. That's just gonna keep adding to that one little area.
That is correct.
And should there be districts that opt not to have sewage? I'm not saying it's wise, I'm just saying, should it? That's all the less revenue that is gonna stream into this district for future needs, for our capital expense, for our administration, for our everything, for our user fees we put on, for everything that goes on to that. So there is a possibility of higher costs to some of these contracted districts.
If some of the other areas opt out and decide not to be part of the district...
That's right, and the rest of you...
Then, the other individuals that are within would pay for the sewer user fees, which account for the operation and maintenance of the existing system. It does not, in a repeat, does not include any capital improvements for future expansion areas. That would have to go back to the exact same thing at that time to be voted into the district, and they would be responsible for those particular sewer needs in the future or capital costs.
Okay, and I think I raised this question at the last meeting. We had an extensive drainage survey done in that area. I know people don't like it, that, I don't like driving down my road, and as I have in the last week with all the rain, and the streets are flooded, not flooded, but they're... That's a drainage issue as well. Shouldn't the town's drainage be part of this digging up roads, putting in sewer lines? Shouldn't drainage and sewer kinda go hand-in-hand, or no?
Anytime we do the wastewater projects, and it's kinda the pipelines, we always coordinate with the municipality with other infrastructure needs that may be there, rebuilding roadways, intersections, stormwater, et cetera. We also coordinate with the other utility companies that may be there, whether it be gas, for instance, or cable, underground cable, to have them upgrade at the same time so they can share in some of the costs. They'd be responsible for their upgrades, but they may even share some of the reconstruction costs of the roadway itself.
But some of our problem will not be resolved, 'cause I can tell you the town has the money to do it.
Right, right. Right now, the road is gonna be rebuilt as part of this project, but is not building additional infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, that is, in order to address some of those drainage areas.
Okay, now, the town owns the Interceptor line, the whole...
Along Mount Hope Bay, correct.
We wouldn't be taking that over as a wastewater district, would we?
Yes, that interceptor is, all of the existing infrastructure that currently exists within the town would be taken over as part of this district.
And that infrastructure is supposed to go up into the industrial park? We're gonna take that on?
Yes, you already own part of that pipeline that goes up. There's already a pump station up there from that industrial park area.
But how are we gonna get it up the rest of the way if we're only these little districts here handling it?
Most of this infrastructure is all by what we call gravity sewer. It flows by gravity from a high elevation to a lower elevation. There are some areas that will need some wastewater pumping stations to be able to transport, I'll say, or pump the wastewater from a lower elevation up to a higher elevation.
But that's not one of our little contract areas?
That is, there is a couple of pump stations within our contractor. There's actually two pump stations within the River Stride Drive area, in order to be able to do that.
So you didn't mention that industrial going all the way up there in your...
The industrial park pump station, it already exists.
But the infrastructure lines do not.
The main line to connect to Mount Hope Bay, Interceptor does.
Only to the highway department.
Right, if the industrial park decides to expand within that area, that infrastructure would be part of their expansion when they're building their structures and buildings, et cetera, up there.
I understand, just concerns me, 'cause we've had problems with the Interceptor line, and so, you're gonna say, we're gonna pick up that cost.
If there's any issues...
If there is any issues with it, we own it.
That's right, which is...
Because you are going to leave the umbrella of the town, so you cannot go back to the town, because the town no longer, and whether this succeeds or fails, what do we do then? Go back and say to the town...
In that case, it's no different than what's happening right now. If there's a problem with that existing interceptor, it's part of the commission's responsibility to maintain that, it's part of their sewer user fees. So, it's already in that funding.
And again, I'm not saying a for or against, I'm just saying, please get this information out. These people deserve the right to know that you are on your own, do not look for the council, do not look for the town, because you own that district, just like we collectively in North Tiverton own the North Tiverton Fire Water District. We own that with all the problems.
And one of the things I didn't mention, and we can go back to the very last slide, which is on the handouts, is actually John Lindcourt's information. So, if there are questions following up this, absolutely, please get ahold of John and send those questions on.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Come on up.
Hi, Louis Hakim from Highland Court. I just wanted to, in my mind, try to understand how the community, as Nancy just touched on it, we have two districts serving the community from the standpoint of water service, North Tiverton and Stonebridge Fire District. You mentioned that this is going to be basically a, it's, it's not going to be quasi-municipal. What I mean by that, the district, it'll have to obviously, if it serves the town, is it responsible to the town council? Or do they stand separate?
No, it would stand completely separate. Part of the, part of the district, requirement for the district, is to go to special legislation to get that approved.
The Enabling Act, et cetera, and all, okay. Now, Nancy was pointing out about responsibilities by district. I'm a little confused. So, could you explain the mechanics of how we provide sewerage service to this community, sectionalized, and it's done by districts within, or, organizations within districts? Or is it one sewerage commission that handles all the districts?
Sure, there'd be one district that would cover all of the existing service area, plus all the eight proposed service areas. And then, for a funding viewpoint or financial viewpoint, there would be what I will call sub-districts. The Robert Gray versus Bay versus Church, et cetera, that would be responsible for the capital costs. Again, that's the betterments to build sewers within those areas. But the whole district is a separate entity that would be run by the commission, which is where the sewer user fees come in for the operation and maintenance of that entire district.
Now, the thing that's interesting, you talk about funding in December of 2014, right? Is the bond enabling, you need funding.
Right, that's correct.
This funding is for the purpose of what?
The funding from RITM, excuse me, from the USDA, Department of Agriculture, through their rural development funding, is to provide construction, designing construction fundings to build the infrastructure necessary for each of these areas.
So, this is basically the groundwork to establish the costs associated with the certain areas, districts? In other words, the projected cost you have not established yet?
We've done some preliminary cost estimates, which are the numbers you have here, that were presented here, the eleven thousand and sixteen five...
I'm talking about what goes before the community as a referendum. How much is that? There's no, there's no number?
No, we have those, the commission has those numbers by neighborhood. They range from eleven thousand to sixteen thousand per resident, or per parcel that would connect by neighborhood.
Oh, I understand, I'm talking about the total budget for each district. How many million is that going to be?
The overall total project cost for the, all the service areas you're talking about is some seventy-two million dollars.
Okay.
Total capital cost.
Now, that apparently is not going to be presented that way in 2014, is it?
No, because it would be broken down by neighborhood or by service area. So, each service area, Robert Gray versus Bay, will have their, their particular portion of that total cost.
And that's the only district or area that's going to vote under referendum?
Each of those individual areas will vote on their individual area based on the presentations of those numbers.
Okay, that's what I was interested in.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'd like to just add that, that every area that's identified will not necessarily get sewers. Our initial proposal is to have the three most critical areas be first, but eight years out, if we get to the second phase of, of Garden Heights area, and the residents vote not to have sewers, then that, then there won't be sewers in that area. So, although the projected cost for everything, if everybody were to, to enter, is something like seventy-two million, realistically, we don't think that, that it's, it may be cost-effective on some of the ones that are further out. So, really, we, we focused on the initial three.
Okay, Mike, under that scenario, if I might follow up, the people in North Tiverton already have sewers. Our lines are already in, that means we have no construction costs, is that correct?
When you say the people in North Tiv, have sewers...
The people who are currently tied into the sewer system will not have any construction costs, because they already have theirs in.
Yes, yes, if they have sewers right now, there will not be additional monies.
So, the people, for instance, that live in Nancy's area, she'll be paying construction costs, but I in the north end, who are already tied in, will not have to pay any construction cost.
That's correct.
The second, this, another question that I have is, don't you think you should be negotiating with Fall River first, before you bring this proposal to the people? Right now, the way it stands, and correct me if I'm wrong, you take out your checkbook and you write out a check for five-hundred-and-fifty dollars per bedroom to the city of Fall River, and you ask, well, what is that for? And that's, well, just because. Just because, no, I say no. And then, we want to help out the poor people in the north end, because they're depressed, low-income people. So, while they got their limited checkbooks out, we sock them with another betterment fee, because now the town of Tiverton has made your house better, we hit them with a twenty-seven-hundred-dollar betterment fee. How do you feel that you're helping the poor people in that area? And then, they'll have the privilege of paying, I believe it's the highest rate in New England for the disposal. And why does Fall River, why are they allowed, why are we allowing them to make money on our sewerage? That's a regional facility, they got federal money because of the fact that Tiverton and four other communities were involved in that, in that construction, yet they're making money on this. Why? Why and how? You can take a house in Fall River versus the same identical house in Tiverton, and the people in Tiverton are paying more than double the amount that the people in Fall River are paying. That's unfair.
Yeah, obviously, I was not involved with the negotiations, I guess I'll call it, when the intermunicipal agreement was done many years ago, and yes, the plant was, did have federal estate funding that was put, put in to build the city of Fall River facility. But the intermunicipal agreement is a legal document that says, here's how you will be charged for, for that. Obviously, there is a cost to transport and treat the wastewater at Fall River, and that's what the intermunicipal agreement is for. That's why commission is going to be going back to negotiate with them. So, the, the numbers we presented here are more of a worst-case scenario with some contingencies, and hopefully, everything will go better and be less costly than what's been projected here today.
I have a question. Say a certain district doesn't want to do it, but some households...
Could speak, Mike, give you all my thanks.
But then, some households want to do it, can we still be a part of it? Because it's still have to be tied in. Say, the pumping station's in what, the Mill complex? It runs through the Mill district to get to the green shaded area, and I'm in the Mill area, but my district denied, doesn't want it, but I do. Can I still hook up, or no? And would I be a part of another district because Mill, the Mill district doesn't exist? Because they voted it down?
Those are some of the details and how they need to be worked out, to see where you, where you physically live and how close you may be.
Because we have, I notice in my area, a lot of houses that were foreclosed, that people bought them, and they got, actually, really nice neighbors, that they told me that they were entitled to the USDA grant loan. Now, that being said, how you said that they were able to get that, I always, I always thought that once you get that grant initially for your home, you're no longer entitled to that grant at all, for anything, for the USDA, USDA.
Yeah, I'm not sure what grant they had before, to getting that home, that there are different grant programs within USDA, this one specifically for infrastructure improvements and upgrades, but would have to look at those case-by-case scenarios to look at somebody and say, hey, you're so close, maybe they can be expanded to be able to include that. It may cost you more, because obviously, you're putting pipeline through other people, by other people's how to do it, but maybe you think that's more cost-effective.
Yeah, because my wife wanted me to ask, just because of the fact that, I know some people in my area, I can't speak from home, some people want it and some don't.
Sure.
And I'm one of those individuals that I'd rather have it, because I grew up in Fall River, I know that, and my mother had, and lives in the south end of Fall River that has a septic, and I'd rather prefer to have sewer. But I was just wondering, say, if the individuals voted it down, like you say, maybe twenty people go out to vote, and they don't want it, but I still do, would I still be able to have that option?
Yeah, we'll have to look at that case-by-case scenario if that comes up, but that's why it's important to get the right information out there and be proactive to the neighborhood to explain to them why it needs to happen to be more cost-effective.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to just make a statement. My sunroof is open, so if you're wondering why I'm all wet, and so I had to go close it. But I, I do want to make the statement that this idea of voting, whether you want it in your particular area or not, just keep in mind, if you, if the area votes it down, then the residents are still responsible for onsite, for putting in onsite wastewater systems if they fail. So, let's, let's just say for the sake of argument that, that the people of Riverside voted down. Now, you've got costs, and you saw the costs, that, that, you know, you're putting in a high-tech system in that case, could cost anywhere from thirty to sixty thousand dollars. So, just keep in mind that, that if you vote it down, that there's no such thing as a free lunch, you haven't gotten away, for instance. It's going to be a situation where you're going to have to pay one way or the other. The vote is whether you, you take it on yourself and take out a second mortgage, or, or a home equity loan, or whatever, or you join the district and be part of a, you know, forty-five cents on the dollar financing, as well as a forty-year amortization. So, those are the real choices. There is not a do-nothing choice unless you have a system that's fully functional and in compliance.
I've got a question, Claudia Almeida, 134 Evans Avenue. I guess we'd be involved with, in Phase One or Phase Two. Okay, now, if it does pass, would there be any consideration taken for people to have replaced their system, since you guys sent out the inspection notice in 2011? I just replaced my system. Now, you're saying, people, you're going to have to do something one way or the other.
Yes.
Now, I'm going to be hit twice.
Okay, yeah, that's a pretty common question, and the answer is, yes, there will be consideration for people who have recently put in systems. The idea is that we don't want this to be punitive to those people, but we have not come up with a solid policy on what that's going to be yet. We need to kind of gauge the support, we also need to do inspections to kind of figure out, you know, what percentage of people have failed systems and would benefit, but there will absolutely be some consideration for people who have put in systems.
Roger Bennis, I don't think your statement, there will be some consideration given to people who have put in systems, is adequate. I've been fighting for the last twenty years to get something in writing other than, oh yeah, we will consider that, because, oh, oh yeah, we will consider that is worth very little. There's other words, but I don't want to use them. To create sewer districts without necessary regulations preceding the sewers would solve a big problem for the people who need the sewers the most, and it's very clear, some people need them desperately. But that would be while cutting the throats of other people. That could be cutting the throat to the people who have just put in a twenty-five to fifty-thousand-dollar system, and according to the present regulations in town today, that person is only guaranteed five years' usage. Then, if the sewers go by his house, he has to tie into the sewers, or his house will be condemned, and he will be hit twice. The proposed sewers will take two to five years to provide sewers to the areas listed in the proposed areas. Right now, many people in the area of the proposed sewers have already obtained new septic systems at a cost of roughly twenty-five to fifty thousand. Per the present regulations, when the sewers are installed, these people will have only five years of guaranteed use. They will be forced to use the new sewers at a cost of roughly eight-hundred to three-thousand dollars per year. Also, in the next two to five years that it takes to install the sewers, any person who wishes to sell his or her home will be required to have a septic inspection. And if the septic system fails, they will be forced to install a new system at a cost of the twenty-five to fifty thousand before selling the house. Then, if they raise the price of their home to recover the cost of the new septic system, any buyer who is aware of the facts will ask that the price be lowered by twenty-five thousand, not raised twenty-five to fifty thousand, because they will be forced to abandon this new septic system and pay the cost of new sewers when the sewers are installed. In addition to those problems, any person who has connected to the new sewers in Tiverton will be paying a fortune in sewer fees for every drop of water that he uses on his car, on his lawn, on his flowers, or on any new shrubbery that needs water to keep it from dying in the summer. That is because the sewer fee is based upon the water usage. I have used roughly a hundred-and-twenty thousand gallons of water per year over the last several years, and pay roughly a thousand dollars a year for water. With roughly eighty thousand gallons of year used outside of the house, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars per year is for outside water. With sewer use tied to water, and the basic rule of thumb is that sewer fees are twice your water fee, I will be paying thirteen-hundred dollars a year in sewer fees for the water that never reaches the sewer. That's highway robbery. There's a solution to these problems, and a solution needs to be implemented in the Tiverton regulations before the sewer plan is approved by the voters. I have proposed a solution to the town council several times over the last twenty years, but it has never been implemented. The solution is simple. Implement the Section eighteen-nine-point-eight-point-eight, twenty-five-year guarantee of use for a new septic ISDS OWDS TS that I documented in Memo RB-11G50 dated seven-fourteen-eleven. That guarantee twenty-five years' use of a septic system when sewers are introduced. There's just another few sentences. Item two, make that guarantee a property covenant belonging to the property and automatically transferable to any new owners, so it doesn't dissolve as soon as you sell your property and the new owner now has to connect to the sewer. Implement the Tiverton regulation that makes a property owner's right to purchase an outdoor water meter for measurement of outdoor water usage, and make sewer bills calculated on indoor water use only. And that is if and when the property owner pays for the outdoor water meter and notifies the sewer commission of his desire to have outdoor water usage deleted from his sewer bill. That way, people won't have to be paying for the outside water use. That was a, a policy in town for many years, and then, for whatever reason, possibly to get more money for the sewer commission, for, for existing sewers that are already in town, that was dropped. But it should be reinstituted. I think we need those two or three basic regulations in effect, because voters that vote for this, in their... vote for this in their area could be slitting the throat to the poor guy next door that just put one in, or slitting their own throat by being nice for the guy next door that can't possibly put one in, because he can't get to his backyard, or he doesn't have a piece of property big enough. And it's the same with the water usage. Why should people be paying if they want to have a decent lawn, or they want to keep a bunch of new shrubbery and flowers from dying in a hot spell? They shouldn't be forced to pay sewer fees for that. I hope that these regulations can be adopted before it goes to the voters.
Yeah, over the next period of six to eight months, the commission is going to be meeting many times to discuss exactly all those points, so that those policies have been developed and approved by the commission before it goes to the vote in the spring by the various neighborhoods.
I just want to add that although some of the numbers that Mr. Bennis stated seem high or seem inflated, all of those numbers are imaginary. Mr. Bennis has no clue as to what the actual costs are going to be, and he's using words like exorbitant costs and this and that, really don't, they're really not appropriate at this time. We haven't done enough work yet to really know all the costs and how we're going to allocate all the costs. We're not doing this, you know, Mr. Bennis made it sound like we were out to make money. First of all, the ordinance that's involved in the town right now is not going to be the ordinance of a sewer district. If there is a sewer district, it will have its own ordinances, and it will, will be ruled by what, what the circumstances are at the moment, you know, for the district itself. So what he quoted, that the town ordinance now, and only have five years, that has nothing to do with what's going to happen in the future with the sewer district. So I think, you know, we're going to give you information in which to make your decision on whether or not you're going to support this or not, but things that he mentioned, you know, water meters for outdoor metering and that sort of thing, those things, I've been in the industry, in the water and wastewater industry for 38 years, and there are very, very few communities, and I can't think of any right now, that have separate meters for outdoor water versus indoor water. What we're talking about doing in terms of basing a sewer bill off the water bill is common practice throughout the United States. And there are no sewer meters, except if you're a large industrial user, so water bills are usually based off water, sewer bills are usually based off water bills, or there are flat fee charged based on the average of a community. And so we're not doing anything any different than anyone else, or not proposing to do anything different from anyone else. But I will guarantee you this, we're trying to do everything that we can on the commission to make this as, as cost-effective and least cost as we can. We will go to Fall River. We will try to negotiate connection fees down, as well as user charges down. We think we have an attractive proposition for the city of Fall River, that if we can bring in, you know, several thousand more users, they get the advantage of increased monthly income, and we don't think that they need to charge 1,500 bucks for a connection fee for a three-bedroom, when they're going to be getting the user fee. So as a new entity, we're going to, the contract that they have with the town of Tiverton, if there's a sewer district, will be a different contract with the sewer district. So we feel like we've got some attractive things that we can talk to them about, and we're going to use everything we can to get the best deal for the residents.
I'm Deb Ghee, and I live at the top of Evans Avenue, which is part of the Riverside Drive District. And my few questions are concerns with, you're going to start with the lower section that's in more need, and then work your way up.
Yeah, Riverside Drive 1 and 2 would be under the same phase. One won't be separate from 2.
Now, are the phases going to be charged differently? If I have, if it's going to be more difficult for you to do Phase 1, are we, am I going to be paying as Phase 3 for what had happened, or for Phase 1 to be implemented? I'll go in as one complete grouping, whether I am Phase 1, 2, or 3?
One grouping.
One grouping, so...
All of Riverside, Phase 1, 2, and 3?
No, 3 is not in the first phase, just 1 and 2.
Yeah, but they'll vote it as 1.
No, just 1 and 2 will vote.
But you could combine the cost overall.
Over the first 2, 3.
Over the first 2.
So the top of Evans Avenue is Phase 2, I'm assuming?
Right, so Phase 1 and 2 will vote at the same time.
And we'll split, we'll split whatever it costs to?
Whatever it costs to 1 and 2 will be amortized over all the residents in 1 and 2.
Okay, even though it may cost you more to do Phase 1 than it would for Phase 2?
Actually, the reason, and that's a very good question. The reason that we put Riverside Drive 1 and 2 together is because we have to put pump stations in, and if we put the pump stations just in Phase 1, then the Phase 1 people would be paying an exorbitant cost, because Phase 2 has to use those pump stations. So in order to be fair, we put Phase 1 and 2 together, since they both are going to use the pump stations, then we had, so that they would share the cost. Otherwise, it wouldn't be fair to everyone in Riverside Drive 1 and 2.
If it gets voted in for Riverside to do this, I can't opt out as an individual who already has a septic system, a functioning septic system.
That's, that's correct. If the community votes, uh...
So I would go, I could ask you to pass my house, but I'd still be paying on it.
That's correct.
Okay. If you come up the street and you put a connection at my house, but don't bring it on to my property, I'm still paying?
We, we need to establish that. I mean, there's two parts to a connection to the sewer system. There's the, the public part, the parts that are out in the street.
Street, yep.
And then there's the connection between the street and your house.
Okay.
And so a sewer pipe that goes out in front of your house benefits you.
Yes.
Whether you connect on it or not.
Yes.
Okay? So that's one part of it.
You can do it later.
The, the part that connects to your house allows you, of course, to pilot your sewers into the, into the system. One of the things that we have to consider, and again, this, this is part of the next six months in how we're going to formulate the ordinances or the rules and regulations of the district, for that person that has a functioning sewer syst, a septic system that put it in five years ago, they're still going to get the benefit of the sewer out in the street in terms of land value and that sort of thing, but there might be some consideration, or I think there should be some consideration, for them not hooking up right away, because they've already made a major investment. But all this is subject to be discussed. We got to gauge how many people are interested, the total cost. I mean, one of the things that we want to do right now is we want to accelerate our inspection program for these three areas, so we can get an accurate count of how many people have failed systems, how many people have new systems, et cetera, so that as we formulate our policy for the district, we take all that into consideration. If, if, if we go through Riverside Drive, and let's say there's 700 possible connections, and we see that five people have had their systems put in within the last five years, that, that's one set of facts. If we find that there's been 100 people that have put in in the last five years, that's a different set of facts. And those are things that we need to find out before we settle in on what, what the deferment might be, what it could be, what it should be, et cetera. So those are the things, this is not an attempt to, to try to weasel out of something. We're engineers, we're trying to find out enough facts to make an informed policy that's fair to everybody and, and not unfair to anybody.
So you're coming in from the street into, onto my property, to where it would get connected, but then I'd have to hire someone to actually connect it to my house?
No, we're, we're, the, the cost that you're seeing is from the street all the way connected to your house.
So someone will be connecting to the house?
Well, we don't know how the construction contracts are going to work out, but we wanted to give the residents the overall projected cost of what it would be from the street all the way into their house.
Okay.
Including the connection fees for Fall River, et cetera. So those numbers, the 11K to 16 and 1/2K, that's all-inclusive. So we tried to give you all the information we can. Now, how it actually plays out?
Yep.
We have to wait until we get into design, and financing, and et cetera, but we want, we wanted to give you the magnitude of what we're talking about.
Okay. And if you are coming onto property, for example, mine has no easy access from the street. And when they dug up the street, they repair the street. If you dig up my cement driveway to get to my connection, are you repairing my cement driveway?
Yes.
That would be all part of the...
That's correct. All the restoration on that property would be repaired.
Okay, I wouldn't end up with having to add that to my expenses on my own.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
As of this moment now, what you're saying is you actually don't have a total picture of how many failed systems are in these projected areas. I'm not talking sepples.
That's right.
Failed systems, you don't have that number.
We don't have that number yet. We're, we're, thank you for the question. We're in the midst of, in certain areas of town, we have an inspection program. Now, right now, the inspection, everybody in the Riverside Drive area should be having their systems inspected, so that we can have a more accurate count of what's going on in those areas. Now, I know that a lot of residents have been reticent to, to have their properties inspected, because they feel like, well, I know I'm in trouble, so, you know, I don't want, I don't want the bad news. But one of the things that we've, we've been talking about as a commission, you know, if, if an inspection's going to cost 200 bucks to have it pumped and inspected, et cetera, and you already know that you're not in compliance, one of the things that we've been talking about is maybe not having those properties inspected, but having the owner sign an affidavit basically saying that they understand they have a failed system. That way, they don't have to pay the money, but we can be, they can be counted as a system that needs to be replaced. So we're talking, we're talking amongst the commissioners to try to save the residents' money of the inspection, but we still need the data. So again, we're trying to come up with, with ways to try to make this palatable to people and not punitive in any way, but we definitely need the data so that we can make decisions on what this, this sewer district ought to look like, and what the cost impacts are going to be to the residents.
I have to take exception to your characterizing my statements and my numbers as plucked out of a hat or, or out of the sky, because strangely enough, my numbers apparently seem to be the same as your numbers in many cases, meaning that either you copied my numbers, or you plucked them out of the same hat as I did.
Steve Belucci, the Director of Public Works. I'm Steve Belucci, the Director of Public Works. I commend these gentlemen for this plan they've put together, and, and the angle in which they've come to kind of reduce the cost if these, the funding comes through, through the USDA program. I'm also working in a coordinated basis, because we have been given notice by DEM that the Robert Gray area and Summerfield Lane has two discharges, one each, that have been found to be polluting Mount Hope Bay. And my responsibility as the operator of the stormwater system, by being the Director of Public Works, I'm the licensed operator by DEM to operate all the catch basins, this is for rainwater, not sewage, and all of the drainage pipes that drain everywhere in town. So I'm quite involved with this citation, and the citation implicitly says, we have to plan and come up with a plan to sewer the Robert Gray and Summerfield areas, these two-point discharges. So my first question is, the, the, can you put up the proposed scheduling? I just want to make sure that in your proposed scheduling for, for that area, that all of the TMDL area that we've been cited for is included. So that would be my, my first question, because that's really important.
There is no proposed schedule in this presentation.
Not a schedule, but you had, you had your phasing in, right? Yeah, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the phasing. It had, it had a list, it listed the roads?
That's Summerfield, all the way up to the town.
No, no, you had a list.
Yeah, there was a, there was a list, but that list is not in order of the phasing to occur.
Okay.
It's just a, I think it's alphabetical, or may not even be alphabetical, but I can roughly tell you the phases of your particular area.
Okay, yeah, no, so, yeah, I'm curious of that. Go ahead.
So are you talking about Riverside?
Well, what, what, the...
Robert Gray?
The conflict we have is that I've been cited through the director to the town to address a very specific sewer problem. And the addressing of that sewer problem is to sewer Robert Gray area in Summerfield Lane. The Robert Gray area extends to the east side of Main Road. This is a big area. So are we going to say, and I'm fully for their plan, is that the plan, that I'm going to walk into DEM and say that this is our facilities management plan, and I'm not addressing the area you're going, you cited me for? I mean, how, how are we going to handle that as a town? I don't want to walk into DEM and tell them, I'm going to handle the problem you cited me for by not doing what you cited me for. So that, that has to be addressed as a priority issue.
Steve, we, we are addressing all of those areas. What we're probably not going to do is going to DEM and say, we're going to sewer those areas, all of those areas tomorrow. We are going, we are presenting a schedule of, of when we're going to start the Robert Gray area. The Robert Gray area is pretty much going to be two phases. We're going to do the first phase first, and then the next phase will be somewhat a couple of years down the line, but this is the schedule that, that we're going to have as a, as a workable schedule. This town doesn't, doesn't afford, can't afford to do it all in one shot. And this is what we have to, this is what we have to tell DEM and, and, and see if we can work out with DEM that, that they can accept our schedule.
You know, I agree with that, and the only thing is, we're not going to tell DEM what to do. They're going to tell us what to do. They've been very kind for almost two years now. As you know, we've been doing illicit discharge testing, trying to build a case where maybe there's a smoking gun out there, and it, but the truth is, it's coming from all the sepples, and it's coming from all the septic systems that failed. There's no denying it. But the question of priority comes up. Their priority, to me, is to take care of the entire area of Summerfield Lane and Robert Gray first. They have never mentioned any of the other areas. You know, your plan is great, but it's not addressing that need. If they buy your plan, that's fine, but what if they don't? And they say, you have to address what we're telling you to address. That's 10 mil and two, two more million for drainage, right off the top.
My, my comment to that is that I understand it, and that's one, that's part of, of what we have to wrestle with as, as a district and as a town, because reality is, is that if we get the USDA grant and loan monies, we're only talking about in the range of $2 to $3 million a year. So there's no possibility, there's no possibility to say, okay, I want $8 million next, you know, a year to cover Robert Gray or, or any area. So we're really talking about phasing all these things in, in, you know, $2 or $3 million a year increments, as the money becomes available. So we've got the stormwater problem, we've got the Robert, the Bay Street area contamination problem.
So, we've got the stormwater problem, we've got the Bay Street area contamination problem, we've got the Riverside Drive cesspool act problem. So, I'm not here, I'm not prepared to say what's the highest priority at this point. We've identified all three as high priorities. It'll somewhat be dependent on how the vote goes. If the Bay Street people say, "We want it," and the Robert Gray people say, "We don't want it," then the stormwater issues still have to be addressed, and the wastewater issues still have to be addressed. So, it's not a simple problem. It's a complicated problem, and DEM absolutely knows that, you know, fiscal constraints are gonna dictate some of the solutions and the timing of those solutions. Let's see. Ed, do you wanna have any closing remarks, or?
I wanna thank everyone for coming out, and if there's anything the councilors wish to ask, but if not, I wanna thank the wastewater commission for the hard work they've put in. As we all know, that sewers are a necessary evil, and as much as we hate the idea of the cost, eventually, parts of the town are gonna have to be sewed, so we're gonna have to take that into consideration. They're doing their darndest to ensure that we can do it in a physically responsible way and address the needs of this town. We will see what happens in going forward, but continue to bring the information to the council, and we will work with you. Again, thank you. Thank you all. Yeah, we have to go up and adjourn.
The next step from this process is that we are going to ask the council to approve our facilities plan update. If they approve the update, then we'll turn that into Rhode Island DEM for them to comment and approve, and if they approve it, then the next step will be to look into developing, enabling legislation to form the district.
Okay, saying no further questions, I will entertain a motion to close this hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn.